If any of you have difficult hearing, please come up to the table because we appreciate you being here. Doug, you're way down there. We appreciate you being here.
I think they all do.
So in case you can't hear, I want to be sure you come up and also if there's some questions, make sure we notice you so we don't pass over anyone that wants to ask something. We like your input. I'm speaking for Mike and I know he really does.
Player not so much.
Go ahead.
All right, so we'll start off first before we get into the budget material with a little update on the proposed bond offering for November. And really that involves, you know, how much our estimates of what the bond is going to be. And I think right now we're in that...
Forty-five.
Forty, forty-five. Thanks, Patrick.
Be back.
In range. And the issue that we're kind of dealing with right now has to do with the radios and what would be, you know, who would all would get these radios, what type of enhancements. And so it would be, you know, when we first did it, we were just talking about the corrections and...
Sheriff and corrections and 911.
And now we're talking, we're expanding the scope and we're talking about rural police and fire and the bigger component would be Omaha police and fire.
Fire station reporting.
So maybe I'll let Patrick talk a little bit now about the update.
Do I sound like I'm anxious?
He should chip me by Patrick so I can smack him.
It wouldn't be the first time. Or the 15th.
It wouldn't be the first. It won't be the last either.
Or the 20th. So the issue here is, we've agreed, well, pending obviously the board approval, that there would be $2 million as part of the bond issue for the fire station reporting.
How much?
Two million.
Okay.
Then there was going to be an issue about radios for Omaha Fire at about two million. Marty Belik has told me that he's optimistic that they're going to be able to get some grant funds for that. If that does happen, and he should know that shortly, whether that's going to, they're going to get the grant funds, and that's two million that we would not have to worry about. So what we're looking at is 45 million, approximately 45 and a half million dollars tops maximum. But the caveat with that is there's going to be some discounts with Motorola for the equipment, for the radios. So anytime you do a contract for purchase of those radios, they discount it to a certain percentage. So it's going to be, we don't know exactly what that discount is, so until we can absolutely solidify that number at 45, or 43, or whatever it is, we need to know what the discount's going to be. So we're in the process of getting that, finding that out.
Can I ask you a question? If the OPD is getting a grant, how come we can't?
Omaha Fire.
What I thought was Omaha Police is getting a grant.
Omaha Fire is getting a grant.
Okay, so our rural fire can't get a grant?
I can't speak to that. Maybe...
Actually rural fire would be included in the OMP grant is their plan if they get the grant. So rural fire was approximately 900,000. So if Omaha Fire and rural fire get grants, that'll save 2.9 million.
Okay. Do you know why we can't get something for police?
For the sheriff's office and rural law, that I do not know. I don't know if there's hardly any grants available or...
Who would know that?
I'm aware of a grant at the fire department. It's mine, so I can't answer that right now.
Okay. Joe, can you see if you can get somebody to find out?
Ask him if he has one.
Pavasso? Okay.
Okay.
Tell him to count them.
And could you seize asset money for those two though?
There's Marty.
Marty?
Oh, okay. Marty?
Lost again?
Marty, we were talking about the, we're talking about the grant.
Yeah.
So could you maybe talk about that? About how that, the question Commissioner Boil had asked is, if you guys can get a grant for your fire radios, hopefully, how come we can't get a grant for sheriff's radios? Do you know anything, would you know anything about like that?
Okay, ask me the end of it.
So if you guys can get a grant for your fire radios, how come we couldn't get a grant for our law, for our sheriffs and rural police, rural law enforcement radios? Because we're going to put those into bond issue. Is there some kind of grant out there that we could have done or could do for that?
I can certainly put you in touch with Melanie Bates, who's the one that applied for the grant. Confirmation of that grant, we're hoping will happen by Friday, so we'll have something very definitive. We're cautiously optimistic right now. But to answer your question, there may be opportunities in addition.
Who would know that?
We can know that?
Melanie down in our office. She's a firefighter and she's also a grant writer.
Okay. Can we call her, Griff?
Me right now?
No.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Right, so that, that's going to save, hopefully, hopefully that'll save 2.9 million.
That'd be nice.
So that, that gets, that's how, isn't that how it got back down to 45? Because it was at 47. So now we're at, it was at almost 48, so now we're at 45, maybe a little bit less. But then we have to figure in discounts. So Kyle, do you know anything about what we could look for for discounts?
The numbers that we've been running for the bond are tentative discounts already for Motorola. They're about 30% lower than the state contract price already. So the amount of discount that we would get would probably only be increased if like the fire station alerting portion was also purchased from Motorola. Then they might be able to roll some like package discounts. But we can't guarantee that because we're not the ones determining which vendor they're going to use for fire station alerting.
So we're still looking at 45 million?
So we're probably right around the 45 million mark.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Is this still sticking with public safety? We're not buying any bowling balls or anything, are we?
It's still, that's all public safety. I mean, we've gone up to 45 because of the issue of the radios and the fire station reporting. So, and that's all obviously directed at public safety. So when it got up to 45, you know, a greater percentage now of the entire bond is public safety, even more than it was before.
Okay, so all I've got is radios, radios on this list for the bond. What else is there?
Well, we have the, obviously the project.
The Fitzgerald home.
The Fitzgerald's own project.
Yes, for 911.
And the equipment. So there's, there was originally about...
And corrections too now.
And corrections, well, corrections is 7 million. So that, that, you know, we had added that on to get up to 40 originally. Because it was 30 million for the project, and then we're going to do 7 million for corrections and 3 million for the radios. But then we had, we got into the rural, into the fire station reporting, so that got up to, so we're up to 45 million.
Okay. As long as it's all public safety, you know, that will kill us if we have something weird in there. Okay.
When you say fire station reporting, is that the same as fire station alerting?
Fire station alert, so I misspelled. Fire station alerting, I'm sorry.
So that would be that $700,000 number that's been talked about?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, is that, what's the 700,000?
There's 2 million for the fire station alerting portions and there's...
700 for encryption?
There's no, well, there's, no, there's 700,000 for Omaha police to upgrade the encryption level on their radios and stuff. That's the other Omaha part. So that they'll have a compatible encryption with the state and with the sheriff, with the marshals and everybody else.
Say Karen, could you see if you could get this information in a readable form for some of us that are in the dark?
Yeah, I think what Patrick's going to be working on is probably putting that together in the next two weeks, would you say, Patrick?
Yeah, and the reason I didn't want to hand out a form, the completed form yet is because we didn't know, or at least I didn't know about what the total number's going to be. And I don't want to hand something out that's going to be in the public and the media if, if we, if that's not the final number.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we could say, you know, that this is a draft, even when we hand it out in a few weeks as we look at it. And there may be some additions. The other thing, you know, I think we need to start to think about, and I don't want discussion of it right now, but this deal is not going to be any automatic situation as far as the bond, whether it's public safety or whatever. And I think we have to determine, is there someone out there that would be someone that could help move this forward like OPS had? And we need to be thinking about, who is that person that could do something like that and be contacting to raise the funds necessary? Because I tell you, if somebody in this room thinks it's going to be automatic and happen, it will not happen.
Well, I think a real logical group is that first responders group. They've raised a lot of money for a lot of public safety things. And I, he came down, made a presentation to us, and I can, I'd be glad to call him and...
See if they have an interest and if they have...
I'm sure they know.
The other thing is, who's had the experience in working with the bonds previously too?
Well, I think our law firm, you know, David Kramer's been out there.
You talked about forming that committee or that group that would spearhead the marketing, the campaigning of it. And we talked about limitations that we had on what we could, you know, campaign versus educate.
Right.
So...
Okay, good.
Well, and we also talked about all of the groups that would be benefiting and bringing on the Omaha Fire Department, obviously would be an asset for that purpose.
Okay. Perfect. So that means Marty Belik's name?
Well, Mike? What do I got to do?
Just answer your phone, Marty. You're good.
Just say yes.
Just say I trust Mike.
And welcome back to the county.
Okay, Joe, what else?
You guys are like family to me.
Okay, anybody, anything else on the bond?
We know you'd rather be here.
All right, so I think that's the bond. So now with that, we'll move on to the budget. We're going to do six departments today. And before I really get into that, maybe I'll just give a little overview of where we are early in the budget process. You know, it's going to be a challenging budget this year. And one of the key drivers is that property values are only up about a little over 1%. And you're, so you're starting to see the issues that's causing already. You saw it with the, with the Millard schools and with Westside schools. They're having budget issues of their own. And that's just because expenses are growing faster than revenues right now.
Excuse me, Joe, I don't, I don't need to stick around. This is internal county business now.
You're more than welcome, but you know...
Yeah, what do you...
Is this, is your good stuff coming?
Can you help us with our budget?
Yeah, we're going to ask that alone from the city. I didn't get to that part yet.
Can you put a sales tax on Russell? Was there a reason you came?
He came for the issue of the bond discussion. I asked him to come to talk about the grant.
I did, I just was, lock the door, lock the door.
What are you doing here anyway?
No, I came for the bond discussion because there's city public safety items on there.
You'll help us with this one, seriously?
Marty, you're still a good dancer.
That's camaraderie.
You're the dancer. I saw you in the dance...
All right, let's not get into the first hole.
All right, so should I...
Yeah, you're okay, Marty.
Maybe it'd be best if I left.
It's an open meeting though.
Nice to see you, Marty.
Always great to see you. Thanks, Marty.
Your Melanie phone number?
Oh, thanks.
Well, let me have your gender just right there. That's all right. Okay, real quick. All right. 5038. Got it.
No problem.
Just be, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You always get it, so. So like I was saying, the primary component of our revenue is only going up about 1.2%. So that's, that's a challenging environment. And so we gave the directions out that everybody should increase their budgets by one and a half percent of payroll and hold everything else flat. And to be honest with you, I'm starting to get phone calls already that there's a fair amount of departments that are pushing back on that, which I think will be problematic. You know, there's certain things going on this year. One of them is, this happens every 13 years that the county has 27 payrolls instead of 26. And this happens to be one of those years. And I think I've got some money squirreled away from an inheritance tax. But that adds about $5 million to the budget. But I think I have that funded. But by funding that, you know, that was kind of, I wouldn't call it a slush fund, but it was our rainy day fund where we handled issues if we didn't need costs. So I'm not going to, we're not going to have a lot of money there to cover shortfall. So like I said, there's, so this is going to be an environment where if we, you know, don't want to have a property tax increase, which is my assumption, that we stay to our policy of only dipping into reserves in the event of emergency, which I think is even more important this year, given that we'll probably be going out for this bond early next year in the first quarter of 2017. I don't think, you know, and the rating agencies by that time will have seen our financials and will know if we have used any reserves. So given those constraints, I think it just makes for a very challenging environment that, you know, the groups are going to come in and they're all going to present. And a lot of them have very, I think, good and invalid reasons why this one and a half percent is going to be tough to meet. But at the same time, you know, we're constrained in what we can do. So once we hear everybody and we have the numbers rolled up and consolidated, there's probably a very good chance that we're going to be having to make some decisions, tough decisions, and probably cutting back on some of the requests. But a little bit of an overview. I don't know if you feel that want to add to?
Well, I don't know. I mean, you know, it's, I hate to bring it up, but maybe one of the things that have to happen is we have to tell departments that are not going to be able to meet this that maybe they have to furl employees. I mean, maybe that's the first place, that's our biggest expense. Maybe they have to look at what they're doing and do they need all the employees to do what they have to do? I hate to bring it up, but...
And my thought was, I was with Joe about this, the fact is, we may, as the numbers come in, we may have to look and say, hey, and it starts with ourselves, that we may have to have every department make a 1% cut or something in order to do it. Otherwise, you're going to have to see if there's a majority, and I'm not going to be part of the majority, of voting for a tax increase. And I think any family that have an expenditure would be able to cut 1% out of their budget if they had to. And I feel like that's something we've got to take a serious look at, what that number is and have further discussion as you get all the numbers. And that may be three or four weeks from now. And I know that's not going to please anyone. And the easy solution is just to vote for a mill levy increase. And I just have a hard time with that. So that's what we are.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, Mary.
Can I ask, Joe, if you would be able to, I mean, we're nearing the end of the fiscal year. And there is a time where you may be bringing to us supplemental budgets. And I think we need to know what those are, or what those could be, prior to even...
Yeah, I'm just starting to get the request on those. So, because we usually go with those in, in early May. So within the next week or two, I should be able to come to you with those. I'm not anticipating, you know, my fingers are crossed, a lot there. We'll see what they are. And also on that one, if there's not a lot, what we usually do is we can switch departmental budgets that are going to have an excess and transfer some money to somebody who's going to have a shortfall, so we don't increase the overall budget. So that would be my goal. So like I said, I'm just waiting to see who's going to come in. There are certain, you know, certain couple of departments I've heard from. Other departments are running negative. I haven't heard from them, like the register of deeds. So we're going to have to see how that goes. And...
Joe, just a quick question. When you say, you know, that we have an increase in the property values of 1. whatever percent, what is that about as a total? Is that $100 million of property value increases?
No, it's about 3 million.
How much?
3 million is all?
No.
No, I mean 3 million of property values, not taxes.
Oh, 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 taxes. I was thinking...
The tax base.
The tax base.
That would probably be about 150 million, maybe. Well, yeah, maybe close to that.
Isn't there around 30 some billion?
Yes. Yeah.
It'd be about 150 million, I'm going to say.
I'm going to say twice that.
And the thing that's interesting is just something that, you know, I mentioned, when you see the medical facilities acquiring the HDR buildings, which was public information, that's about 40 or 50 million coming out of the tax base. And that, you know, is a real factor. And it's a continuous factor.
Yeah.
That we need to, and I know we're all kind of looking at what those options and things are, but that's a big deal.
Yeah, I, you know, if you read, like, the Case Shiller Index was up. The latest number I saw on that was, you know, 5.5% on a nationwide basis. But, you know, housing sales are up year over year, you know, on a per, per house basis. So that would say if the national average was 5.5%, we're only up 1% that Omaha is, is lagging in real estate right now. I don't know.
All of you, all of you now have a minor in economics, so...
Yeah, I don't think it's lagging, you know. I think the market's pretty strong, but it takes a lot of property values to make up 40 million when you're raising $8,000 or something.
Well, the county assessor is looking at, is raised, raised, jumping on the bed, raising a little ruckus. I got a call from Habitat for Restore. And they've kind of been put on notice they're going to lose their tax exempt status possibly. Salvation Army's on the chopping block, so is Goodwill. And the reason being that, what are they really doing to be charitable? What are they really doing to earn a nonprofit status? And it's, I told Restore there, and I have to start giving away some things when they build houses because otherwise they're, I mean, they're not charitable. So anyway, and Salvation Army admitted they'd give away nothing free. So anyhow, that is out there somewhere. And then that spills over into, you know, other thrift shops, and it also starts to hit the YMCA versus Prairie Life. And it even gets into cardiac rehab and hospitals. I mean, it goes on. So they could, they could be running around with pitchforks pretty soon, the assessor's office. Well, we probably should get on with this.
Yeah. So anyway, that's just kind of an overview. You know, as we get through the budget process and as we get everybody's submissions, we'll roll up the numbers and we'll have a better feel exactly where we are and what has to be done. But let's go ahead and start doing, we're going to do six departments today. And we're going to start off with the county engineer's office. And, you know, within the county engineer's office, they actually control three budgets, which is the very small county engineer himself and his assistant, and then the more significant roads and bridge budgets. So you can see year to date, for all three of them, they are under what the total budget is. And, you know, they're more significantly under in roads and bridge. But that always happens due to just a delay of the construction projects and the timing and that we're coming, you know, just into the spring period where there's a lot more work being done. But, so there's no, just like every year since I've been here, there's not going to be a supplement from the county engineer's office. But to talk more about what's in their budget for next year and the projects and things like that, I'll turn it all over to Tom Doyle.
Rather than take your time and try to convince you that I know all the details of the budget, because you had a long day. As you, most of you know, I think maybe all you, Tom McDonald is really the guy that puts our budget together. He knows what's in there and what isn't in there. So, Tom, you're on.
Thank you, Tom. Get on that cherry note. I was asked to bring the answers to those questions. And copies of the...
Oh, wow. Organization chart?
Organization chart.
Oh, you get the whole thing?
You get, yeah.
If there are some extra ones, we want to be sure some of you get a copy. And Mike and I can always share. We share everything almost.
Sure why not.
So if somebody's short and wants a copy, please tell us.
Yeah, I brought 15 copies of each.
Is there one on there?
Should be 14.
There you go, Tom. Doug's never missed a budget meeting yet. Somebody else see it something?
TJ, do you have another copy from origin?
Okay, the biggest project that's currently under construction is Q Street from 180th to 194th. Total on that's going to be between 8.5 and 9 million. The project should be completed before the end of the year. It was not able to be phased as the original plan showed because of problems with utilities. So we may end up with some requests for a little bit of money from Hawken. It's a general contractor. We'll have to look at their claims at that time. For the, with this budget, the current budget, we had an extremely large overlay and payment maintenance budgets. And that's moving forward for next year. It's down a little bit, about 3.5 million. Contractors, actually the overlay for this year is about 3.7. The SISL is a little under 800,000. We don't have the bid yet on the microcubing, but it should leave most of our roads in fairly good shape. Stuff that our maintenance crews can handle without a big problem. Those, board approved a couple of weeks ago, the construction of 192nd Street north of Maple over to Fort Street, there's development in that area. Indian Creek has been there for some time, Indian Point's a little bit to the east. And this cuts through there as a, as a section. Our infamous 180th Dodge to Maple. It's moving a little more than it was for the past 10 years. The new NDOR director, I think got tired of hearing people screaming and crying and has kind of pushed the state to get involved again. So hopefully we'll be buying right away for this year. It's included, there's money included in this year's budget. And that's an 820 split with the, with the federal highway. The Q Street project I mentioned is an ACIP project. So we'll be getting reimbursed on that one. On our construction list, we've got about 25% lower budgeted for this year. Some of those will also be ACIP projects. Some of its design work, putting a lot of emphasis the next couple of years on bridges. You've heard a lot in the news media about all the problems. Douglas County's bridges are not in bad shape compared to the rest of the states. A number of years ago, 89, was a bond issue. And then they came out with a safe match or a soft match program, which increased the value of that bond issue by about five, five times. So we're not near as bad a shape as some of the others. We just led a contract to do a road alignment and convert a bridge to culverts at 288th and Dutch Hall, a little under 700,000. And we're splitting that with Dodge, obviously, that's kind of the, and there's a number of those coming up. Most of them aren't quite that big. Our equipment's down about a third for this year. The last two years have been fairly high on equipment. We had a lot of our more expensive equipment that we needed to get. This year, we're just replacing four, four of our large trucks, ones we use for pollen materials and pollen and snow, providing a number of smaller pieces, putting in our stickers. Large mowers, we do a lot of mowing lanes highways. One thing that I know, a couple, there were several questions last year on the gas fee. Budgeted things. And what we did this year is we separated the diesel from the gas fee. And that's budgeted at 575,000 this year for the two of them, which is down a little bit from last year. Another major expense that's been discussed last year is snow materials. And we kept the budget the same on them. We had a fairly, fairly mild winter this year. So we should... mild winter this year, so we should have a little bit left in the budget, but. If somebody can tell me when it's gonna snow.
So, bottom line, what would be the increase, and I know you get tremendous amount of money from other sources, but our share, what would be the increase in your budget?
About, yeah, about two thousand dollars, which was under what we were requesting.
Just that, that little piece up there, the two hundred nineteen thousand, that's the only general fund money. All, the other two pieces for brick, roads and bridge are not, are primarily gasoline tax, is that?
Yeah, there are a number of sources.
Other funds, but it's not property tax.
No, about a third to one percent of our budget.
Right. So you, your budget is really increasing one percent from the county.
Less, a little less.
Little.
Yeah, they're within the guidelines.
Yeah, we were under what we were asking.
Yeah, I'm just figuring it, modified budget, two hundred nineteen, one percent of that'd be twenty-one hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, they're in that one.
Well, that's very good. The gassing has to be somewhat of a help, do you, as far as the price from a year ago?
Yes.
A little bit. You know, it's like the airlines, I mean, they're kinda.
Another big benefit that we have is the ACIP money, which actually is, in effect, a surcharge on new starts. And we get to use that as a local match against our state and federal share, whereas if we didn't have that, we'd probably be asking for, or would be in the, in the area of asking for general fund money, which we don't, right?
Right.
And how much is that?
This year, we're spending about ten million of it. Now, some years, we haven't spent any.
What's the source of that, federal?
No, that's a fee on new construction starts.
Oh.
On development.
No, development, okay.
Yeah, and that was put together by the city of the state and the, and all of the.
Okay. Any other, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does anyone have anything they'd like to ask of an excellent presentation of a newly elected official, Tom Doyle?
Anybody that's on the county, it's a street cloud now.
Hey, 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 hey.
Are there any questions? If every department could come in like you, we'd be a lot.
That's my lead vote.
Yeah. Hope everyone could follow in your footsteps.
Well, there's a difference when, when the legislature in sixty-nine set up the, the operations for the locals, they, they made a, they sent down a mandate, but now they send the money along. That's different than what happened in the old cases.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, road areas are terrified.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Nice job by you.
Two.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Everybody has to do what they did. So, next up, we're gonna do civil service.
Yeah, nothing.
He was right, he was right.
Good take care, guys.
We'll make it even better. If we do it again next year, we just won't promote it.
How are we doing?
So, civil service, before I turn it over to Karen, we'll just do that, just show where we are this year. Right now, they have twelve budget employees. The current modified budget is nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. Year-to-date, they're seventy-one point four, spent at seventy-five point three. So, based on that, I'm not anticipating that there would be any need for any supplemental budget this year. It's a department that doesn't have any revenue to speak of, and you can see the amount of the payroll that, you know, eighty, close to ninety percent of the budget is payroll-related, so.
In the titles on some of these pages, there's some stuff in there that, like, where it says records imaging, disregard that, where it said extension to the other pages.
What did I do?
Just disregard that. I mean, it's just one of those vagaries of technology, some words got thrown in there, so.
What do you see?
Records imaging.
I just asked Karen what that means, and she had no idea.
Yeah, it's just misplaced. It's not a, you know.
Well, yeah, I didn't even notice it.
We're combining, we're combining the offices.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Well, I heard Claire ask about it, so.
So, with this, I'll, I'll turn it over to Karen to go through the specifics of her budget.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, and we just threw some slides together at a kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view. We actually have eleven point five FTE, which is approximately, the salaries are approximately eighty-nine percent of our budget. That's where most of our costs are. We have fairly stable staffing. We had two individuals retire, one in December and one in January, but nine out of the twelve staff in our department are eligible to retire. So, succession planning is kind of an important thing for me. We did fill the HR generalist position, but we left the compensation position unfilled for now because we didn't want to come back and ask for supplemental dollars because we had some big vacation payouts. So, we do plan on filling it. That's just a quick look at our org chart. Two of our employees work over at DCHC, that's Linda Hita and Lori Wright, and then Kathleen Donaghy works at Corrections. She's the point five FTE right now, so she's part-time. Our major expense items that we wanted to cover is forty-six percent of our non-salary budget is in contracts. Career Link is our recruiting, are one of our main recruiting tools. They have a lot of market share, and most organizations in the Omaha metro advertise on Career Link. It has good following. We also use NeoGov, which is our job application system. That allows individuals to apply online, and we can process them through and get applicants and applications electronically out to departments, so we don't have to print and push a lot of paper around. CHI is the company we use for drug testing. That's for pre-employment screenings and other types of testing. Skillsoft is the e-learning company, and as you can see, this, this one particular contract accounts for forty-six, four hundred.
What is Skillsoft?
Skillsoft is our e-learning. It allows us to push classes out to all employees and ask them to take them like sexual harassment. Most of it's legal compliance-related training that people have to have.
They do it online.
Yeah. Yeah. And we have, for those that don't have computers at their desk, we have terminals set up in all of our eight-door locations, so people can come take classes there. We just wanted to quickly review some of our recruitment selection information. If we just look at 2015, job interest cards are a really neat thing that NeoGov allows people to go in and they can fill out the different jobs they might be interested in, and then when the job is posted, it actually emails those applicants, so that they don't have to constantly be looking at our website. And as you can see, it's grown tremendously in usage. We had two hundred and sixteen job requisitions last year, two hundred and ten postings. We had ten thousand six hundred and fifty-eight applicants applying, seventeen hundred roughly of those were referred to departments, and we hired three hundred and eight people.
You had jobs for two-ten and hired three-oh-eight?
Yeah.
How's that happen?
Because sometimes a job posting, like for Corrections, will be for fifteen vacancies. So, good question. This does kind of, is a quick slide that shows where our recruitment source is. Our biggest one is our own website, which is two thousand three hundred and sixty-four. People used that last year. Then it falls next to the county postings, that people see our county postings, and that's what they're relating to, county employee, and then also we see Career Link and governmentjobs.com. Those are our top five recruiting sources.
What kind of a budget do you have for that?
For our recruiting, it's pretty small. Most of the money is just goes to pay our contract with Career Link. Our HR website is supported through dot com, and then we maintain our own website internally, so.
So, the World Herald and the newspapers are insignificant?
Overall, it's cost, they are relatively insignificant.
Thanks.
It's, it's declined over the years as more people are going to online.
Pretty much.
This just quickly shows you those five, and Career Link and the HR website over the last five, six years is our top. And these three, or these five sources really pretty much account for eighty to ninety percent of the applications that we receive, so.
Did they have to come?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask on that, you had other sources on that other page where we do postings. So, what are those costs, and are they becoming obsolete now because of the?
The other sources?
Everybody's got the Googles?
Um, yeah. I mean, we don't actually very rarely advertise on a national website, but what happens is there's organizations out there like Indeed.com, and they go in and they screen scrape off of an employer's, and then they post a job. So, individual will say that they got it from a national board, but we didn't put it out there.
So, we're not paying?
No.
Okay, okay.
Matter of fact, we're doing almost no advertising on the World Herald and print. Career Link really takes care of.
Okay, that's what I, yeah. Okay, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, under rare circumstance, we might go national depending on your needs. If you're looking for department director or something like that.
Okay.
But that's pretty rare.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, if you had to cut recruitment, say fifty percent, what would that save, and what would you cut? What does it cost you for recruitment?
I think our Career, Career Link.
Between, between what we pay in NeoGod, what we pay in Career Link, it would be about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars annually, which.
That's the total cost?
Yes. That was a serious issue, because everyone's expecting you to have an online application part of that. And that was a serious issue for us, I think.
Is there a budgetary figure for what these sections cost? I mean, is it somewhere here that I didn't see it?
Where do you link work taking up?
Well, I'll say recruitment, you had a big section on recruitment.
Well, basically, Career Link is costing approximately thirty-three hundred dollars.
Do we have something like that here?
I would get it.
Yeah, we, we didn't, we just included it in the contract line. I have to come up with it together.
Do we have a contract line item here?
Yeah, it was, it's not on there, but it's on the slides, but I can get those printed out pretty, but it's forty-six thousand one hundred dollars for all of our contracts.
So, Karen, the next, the next one, so let's have them do that, because it's a lot easier than trying to listen to this and make notes.
Yeah.
Get these costs, we don't know what these divisions are costing. I mean.
Yeah, I'll provide it to you. We'll get it to you.
Whether it's forty thousand or two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the next slide, so.
What's that mean?
Um, these are just of our non-salaries or our biggest single accounts. So, contract, contracts is one, the next one is professional fees. And so, under professional fees, we have employment and promotional tests. We do testing for, that we purchase tests for Corrections, for nine-one-one, and so those tests are in there. We also have an online typing test that we use to go along with our online application system. And we also pay for the psych evaluations for the nine-one-one center applicants. And then we have attorney fees for our civil service meetings, and that line item.
Excuse me, who do we pay the attorney, who, who gets attorney fees?
The attorney fees for our civil service hearings.
If we lose, we pay him or what?
No, they're there to represent the community, because they're a tribunal, and sometimes we need a legal opinion or legal advice.
Why don't you use the county attorney?
Because the county attorney is representing the county.
Oh, who's that representing?
That's the Civil Service Commission.
Sorry, you, we'll say, what'd you say, Civil Service Commission? And then the county attorney is representing the county attorney?
The departments.
Or the department.
That's there, but their decision usually, the suspended voter, they're representing the department for the county.
Okay, all right. I'll have to get more information on that.
Yeah. Can I add?
Yeah.
Because the, the history on that was that it was always the county attorney, and then there were conflicts, if you will. So, a number of years ago, it was deemed that the county board agreed that the civil service, because they are independent, that they should have their own attorney representing them versus the county attorney represent, representing them and paying this constant conflicting out of cases type thing.
Aren't we doing that already now?
Yeah, that's what that is. That's.
Do we have to do it every time? I mean, is it?
No, we, we just pay him on a yearly basis.
Who is it?
Bob Hamer.
Oh, yeah, Bob.
Yeah. He charges us a very reasonable fee, up below what most attorney markets.
So, that whole thing is nineteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, for all of those.
All those.
Okay.
Okay, this is just a quick slide for compensation during this pa, this fiscal year, which isn't over yet. We have, we've done fifty-five job descriptions, participated in ten surveys, done several salary studies, and we helped labor negotiations before contract, pay scale documents. These are just highlights that we wanted to talk, show you, so. You might go to the next slide, Karen. Benefit administration, this was a big year for ACA reporting, and Diane was very helpful, as was, we had a specialist from dot com that helped us, but I think we figured that on ACA, we spent our own HR staff a thousand hours on ACA's reporting. We implemented long-term disability, we put pension statements on self-service, we reviewed and modified the pension plan document, we also got the total comp statements, which was a strategic planning initiative for the prior year done, and they're out on the website, and we also worked with, helped with the RFP for the insurance broker that was decided this past year.
Excuse me, what is the phrase, pension something on self-service? What's that like? What pension statements on self-service?
Yeah, we used to send them out in mail.
Yeah.
Now, we put them out on the self-service that's available, where you can do open enrollment.
I just didn't understand the way that, the way that reads.
Yeah.
The word, the word on kind of threw me.
Okay. Employee development and training, our department contacted thirty-two classes last year. Those are some of the topics that we covered, and I think that affected, we had about six hundred participants in those classes total.
These are separate apart from our e-learning?
Yes, these are actual classes.
These are face-to-face.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, employee relations investigations, we had twenty-seven, the big departments were DCDC, DCHC, and DCYC. Out of twenty-seven, those departments had twenty-one of the investigations, and that has to do with employees that are contacting us because they feel that they've been discriminated in some fashion. We do an objective internal investigation, and then we provide findings and recommendations back to the department.
Do you have employees that do that?
Yes.
Couldn't, could you refer that to the city of Omaha? Human rights and relations?
This is done internally by us. I suppose we could. I don't know if we have to.
What's the cost of that?
There is no cost, because it's our own staff doing it.
The employees aren't getting paid?
Well, they're getting paid, but this employee also does our training.
It's one person that does the training and the investigations.
I think it'd be important to put some cost figures in these, because all these little things add up, you know. If there's some way to throw that over to the city, if it's a human relations kind of thing, you may want to.
Yeah, and then it'd be somewhat independent, coming in from another city.
Yeah.
I don't know if they would, if they have, if they have the jurisdiction.
Yeah, we would probably have to pay for them to do it.
No, you don't. I mean, a citizen can make a complaint to the Human Relations Department, citizen can do that, and so that's what you tell the employees, file with the Human Relations Department, if they don't charge. I just suggested, and it's not a big item.
And then again, that might mean that employee, we'd have to have less employee in terms of the other area.
Yeah.
If that person spends half their time on it, now that's, you know, not much of their time, then you weigh that. I know where my, it's kind of going just at, we talk about, you know, half employees.
Legal compliance, there's a number of changes that are, are upcoming or have occurred. We've kind of mentioned ACA reporting already. The FLSA post-salary test change is coming. We expect it's probably gonna be published in September, and we're probably gonna, or in July. We'll probably have to comply with that by September, so we've already done some of that. Nebraska minimum wage changed to nine dollars, the OFCCP minimum wage changed to ten, and there are several other OFCCP requirements that we have to comply with because we have federal contracts. And then there's been recently some EEOC cases filed on sex discrimination that we're following very closely. following very closely, um, uh, so those are kind of what we've been looking at. As far as conclusions, this is just a recap, civil service commission budget, um, our salaries budget was eight thirty-one, seven, twelve, one and a half percent of that is twelve thousand four seventy-five. Um, our max budget according to the one and a half, it'd be nine thirty-eight, forty-seven, and we're coming in at nine thirty-eight, two forty-one, so we're under the one and a half.
Any questions? I would ask, do you, um, do, um, I haven't done any, I don't remember, maybe I've been asked, I haven't done any appraisals of any employees, do you have a system where you send that out or what's the deal?
Yeah.
We do.
You send that to every department?
Mm-hmm. Yes, every month we send out, basically employees is due for their performance appraisal on anniversary date, so every month we send out, uh, forms to every single civil service department, uh, to the department for those employees who review that typically a month, and then the, then the departments, uh, complete those forms.
So somebody, one, one person answers it then, like, for example, it might be Mr. Parkinson would answer?
No, 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 it depends on the supervisor, basically whoever your supervisor is, you're...
So you, you wouldn't do it at all?
No, remember, I send it out, I send, I do pat tracks, but I send the appraisal out to all of you to say, fill it out and send it back to Karen, and then we'll consolidate. I haven't gotten any back yet.
But what I do is, you know, I'm a supervisor, so I will do the performance appraisals for the fifteen department directors and some of the staff in our office, so I do like twenty of them a year.
Okay. Uh, then I want to ask you, do you have a written policy that the county discriminates against gays, lesbians, and transgenders?
Um, we don't have a policy that says we discriminate against them, but right now they're not protected group under federal law.
So effectively it is, you have a policy there?
Well, we don't ask, so we don't know if they are or not, so, uh, but the thing is, and I think you and I talked about this earlier, was that the, um, I believe the county attorney's office issued an appeal now, we can create our own protected class. We don't have that power.
Unlike, unlike the city?
Right, 'cause they have the power.
City has ordinance.
We don't.
City has ordinance though.
Yeah.
See, me, when you don't have a policy saying we don't discriminate, then you do. So I think we have an unwritten policy that, you know, you do, our county government, including me, we all discriminate against gays, lesbians, and transgender. I mean, where does a person go, uh, if they're gay and they get hassled because they are gay, where do they go? The city of Omaha?
No, they, they could, but they can also go file it in Nebraska Employment Opportunity Commission, and they can file with the federal agency, and that, two cases that I was referencing and the slide, those are coming up because the EEOC is, is maintaining that gender identity and transgender is part of sex discrimination under Title VII, and so if that comes out that way, then, then they will be protected by, under Title VII, and that's what we anticipate will happen.
Yeah, well, I still think that's our policy, it's unfortunate, you know, it's in a vacuum, we don't have it, and it exists. Uh, Karen, could you do me a favor? When you, all this stuff is really good, but I don't have it, and it'd be really great if you could scan this stuff so I could use my, I don't, I don't like paper all the time, but if you could scan all of these budgets so that I could have them on my, um, iPad, it'd be great, then I'll have to try to scramble notes and all that, please.
Thanks, Barb, I appreciate you being here and your points. Okay, the budget is nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, the maximum, four eighty-seven, okay? So what was it last year? If I was looking and I saw fifteen, sixteen, what would the total be?
Nine twenty-six, zero twelve.
Okay.
Nine twenty-six, zero twelve, was, uh, last year?
Yeah.
So that's where you come up with that one point three percent, or what?
One point five.
Well, the one point five is actually only of the eight hundred thousand.
Uh, one point five of the payroll.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's up from nine twenty-six to nine thirty-eight?
Yeah.
So that's very good.
Twelve six.
They're trying to keep it down.
Yeah, that's good.
We're having all the good students here.
Well, the problems.
Yeah, pretty good, huh, Doug? So far, so good.
It's looking so good, you made it a ticket to the park free. Such, such money here.
Give me one of those passes. Okay. Hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right.
This is necessarily, thank you, but at some point, you provided at one time a list of all the e-learning stuff that we had, could we just do that again, and so I'm just interested, and then maybe there would be something we would want to add a future date pass, that's like suicide prevention, maybe there's something on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thanks.
General assistant.
No.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Okay, so, so next, we're gonna go to general assistant, uh, Deb Redding's here. And you know that over the past few years since Deb's taken over the department, there's also, us come in, uh, below budget, and so they're another exemplary department for us. Uh, within her areas, she has forty-one budgeted employees, uh, she has a budget, current budget of about six point eight million, she's sixty-three percent, sixty-three point six percent spent, gets seventy-five percent of the year done, so she will, uh, not need a supplement, I'm anticipating. Uh, she does get some revenue in, I don't know, who do you get that money from?
The revenue comes when clients get approved for SSI and...
That's what it is.
Yeah.
So about four hundred thousand, and, uh, her budgeted payroll is about, uh, two point eight million, so it's probably around, uh, thirty percent or so of, of her expenditures go to payroll.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and just start with the, uh, budget template.
Okay.
If you want to do that. Um, what general assistance does is we provide rent, medical, non-food, transportation assistance, uh, to the indigent population of Douglas County who are found eligible based on their income and resources. Um, you know, due to an improving economy, our numbers are actually down, so, which is a good thing from, you know, taxpayer standpoint, and for the clients who are able to work and, and have jobs. Our, basically, our top goals would be to, um, work with the community mental health clinic to expedite mental health services for our shared clients. Right now, we share approximately a hundred and seventy clients that kind of can fluctuate.
What, what's PhD?
Primary healthcare clinic.
Thank you.
Which is the medical portion of general assistance. And then also just to add more services for the clients on site that we can do, um, GED classes, job fairs, things like that, and then always continue working towards providing our services in the most cost-effective manner that we can do that. Uh, our organizational chart, this year in the budget, we'll have thirty-five employees plus two vacancies, uh, because of the decrease in the clients that are coming into the department. Basically, when staff leave or retire, I just don't fill those positions.
Which ones are vacant?
Uh, we have a vacancy in our interviewers.
Okay.
And also a vacancy in our lead eligibility, the lead QA evaluator.
That's great, and not because you have vacancy, but that you don't just hire another person when you realize you don't have the need and the amount of traffic you're getting, so we appreciate that ability.
And we've also gone with the, uh, electronic application instead of doing anything on paper, and as we get going with that, I think it's just gonna make the whole process even more efficient than, than it is now. So the budget details, um, like I said, for this year, we're down a few employees. Our, my expenses on the budget will be down about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But with that, our revenues are also coming in lower because we have more clients who are getting approved for social, SSI, but it's not taking as long, which is great for the clients. So when we get that reimbursement back from any medical, or I'm sorry, any rent that we've paid, it's a lesser amount of money than it has been in the past. Sure.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that due to, are we using SOAR more often, or just the philosophy around it, I guess, or what's the...
Yeah, it's just that philosophy, some of our clients work with SOAR. Uh, we also have the partnership with Legal Aid that we did, started a few years ago. Yeah, so that's helped too.
Okay.
Because we're able to get our clients referred to Legal Aid a lot faster and then get that process started for them.
Good, any other questions? Chris?
Deb, can you, um, can you make a note with some of the services you're doing now, just to touch base with Erin again, because they, workforce rebid the contract and RISCARE got it?
Okay.
And RISCARE deals with the state's standard population, and they just laid out a whole array of services that I'm thinking, I know we already do some referral down to workforce, but they, they may even have some other stuff to be able to help us in that respect. And, I mean, we asked it last year, it's probably gonna come to the board in a couple of weeks, um, if you're gonna be three hundred, Deb, and I know we got some other places, but last year we, we did this piece on the city for thirty thousand for the extreme poverty around the county. The city put in four hundred, we just put in thirty, and I'm just asking if it's three hundred, can it be, can we just hold at thirty in case? Because, uh, we partnered with, uh, that contract's on come, Theresa and those guys have got it for their local agreement that we put in the budget last year, and what it does is for that, um, the city gives four hundred for extreme poverty, for workforce training, other stuff like that, and the county, because the share we deal with just gives the thirty to help balance it out.
So we did this last year, we gave thirty?
It's in the budget now, I'm just waiting for the project to get there.
In which budget, do you know? Our budget?
Yeah.
But it's not in this budget, you submitted?
No, we, um...
It was, it was encumbered from the previous year.
Encumbered, yeah.
So I'm saying, can we do the same thing?
So funds are, they're still there, they're just...
Okay. Mary Ann?
Deb, is there a way for you to track the top five needs of our clients, you know, whether it be the, the, the job, the transportation, the medical, the mental health, whatever it is, um, is there a way to go back and look at that? And then, to the second part of that is, um, update our zip code map with numbers? But I'd be curious, when they come in, obviously they're coming in because they need short-term assistance, potentially long-term assistance until SSI is kicked in, but during those conversations of assessments, what are, what's kicking out? Because I saw on here that you said you would like to have a GED.
Yes.
Become a GED site?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, you say that because you're seeing the need, or because, why?
Yeah, I think just for the GED classes, it's familiarity with our clients, they know where we're located, you know, we have a nice conference room that would, um, be perfect setting for that.
I would just be curious as to what they're talking, their needs are.
Sure, I would say when clients come in, that primarily their need is rent.
Rent.
Rent and medical are our top two. Uh, cremation assistance, this year, um, well, through February, our cremations are about the same, we've provided ninety-eight through February of this year.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes, uh, you're budgeting for thirty-five plus two vacancies, so essentially thirty-seven people.
Yes.
Uh, how long does it take to train somebody? Should we have a situation like we had six, seven, or eight years ago, when all of a sudden our numbers soared? How long does it take to train somebody?
It really depends on the people that we hire, I would say a good three months for a caseworker, just so they have the basics and are able to work on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Well, so, I'm just curious, Deb, based on, uh, the last discussion, what's your, uh, your years of service, like your turnover situation around there? Like who's eligible to, to...
I think right now there's, um, four employees that are eligible to retire.
Okay.
We have a lot of people who are kind of sitting at the eight to twelve-year mark, they haven't really been with the county that long.
Okay.
I wanted to ask something sort of related. We have a, a lot of people who, when they're in court, they're asked by the judge if they're indigent, they say yes, and, uh, I mean, a lot of them are, some are, quite a few are, but some are maybe ten percent. Um, would there ever be a, a way, if we get, start talking to the courts and the judges, they present a budget to us, they don't come talk to us though, but anyway, if we had a way of getting them to, uh, when someone says, I'm indigent, uh, do they have, do we have a way we can contact you, would you be the source to say, no, they're not, or yes, they are? Do you have a record of that or no? Who does? Anybody?
We would only have the information if the person had...
Applied.
Applied with us.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I wondered about how to make that happen, because I, I remember a guy that had about ninety apartments and, um, he was protesting his own taxes and, is that, are you indigent? He goes, yeah. Anyway, a lot of that happens, I'm just curious about how we could remedy that. Put your thinking hat on.
Are you still indigent, PJ?
Talk to Judge Gleason, see if he can come up with something. Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't say that. Take that off the record. Okay, uh, I had a question a lot like Mary Ann's about, you know, what, what your clients need most, and one of the things that I'm talking to the Department of Corrections about is, um, putting together, um, a garage somewhere, uh, to work on automobiles, and then have your clients be able to go there and get their cars repaired, 'cause so many of them break down, you see the General Motors cars with those stickers of a certain company on the back end, as a hoots up, and there's usually an African-American woman standing next to the car, you know, or a bunch of kids in the backseat, and you know, you know that this is what has happened to them, I mean, and that's what I'd like to see, if we can benefit the inmates and also benefit our people, so, we may be talking about that. But, um, also, do you find that there are enough, um, uh, soup kitchens? You know, one of the, St. Peter's, I don't know where that priest came from, probably fair acres, anyway, he closed their soup kitchen at St. Peter's for no reason at all, I guess, and a lot of those people, a lot of those people, well, plants, anyway, uh, he closed it, closed the soup kitchen and, um, for no apparent reason, and just like that overnight, and there were people there who come in on Friday and they get a couple bologna sandwiches, and that's what they live on over the weekend, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I'd be curious if you could kind of find out, maybe you're not, I don't know if you're the person that got plenty to do, but I think there's a need for those kinds of services, the Baptist church picked it up over on Clark Avenue, yeah. So I'm, I'm just curious, a lot of people are living upstairs in places that are really hurting.
Metro.
Yeah, what's that?
The metro area continuum of care for the homeless probably has, if you call, uh...
Charles Colley.
Uh, Charles Colley.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Joe?
Deb, can you just give a brief update on your departments, uh, how you're participating in the, uh, electronic health records rollout?
Yeah, um, we are participating for the primary healthcare clinic over at the Health Center. Um, part of what's in the budget this year is that we're paying, um, for the gal who's kind of in charge of that piece of it. But as far as the electronic health records and any funds, we actually still have money from last year encumbered, um, to help with primary healthcare's share of that money.
Yes.
Um, going back to the five top needs, um, one of, um, you said rent or medical, obviously that's what they're coming, um, to us for, so, um, rent, um, I'd be curious as to how we're doing with landlord participation, if maybe there's something we need to maybe do a little bit more of in that area? But then the medical, um, do we have, like, what, the five top medical needs, what's your, that they're coming to see us on? I mean, wasn't diabetes and asthma and blood pressure, are those still the same?
Yes, and I can have the clinic, right now, because we don't do anything electronically, it would, you know, they can go back and look at our top problems, but yeah, those would be the main three things that people are seeing for.
All right. I just wondered if that changed at all? And then, if you could ask them about the mental health issue, if we're seeing, if it's staying, increasing, uh, what that looks like over the last couple of years?
I wanted to ask, Joe, what our policy is, if there's two unfilled vacancies, do we go ahead and put the money in for them, or do we just sit around?
No, you, you budget for them.
Okay, so, uh, is there a plan to fill those, or you're just kind of seeing how things go?
Well, I'm just gonna kind of see how things go right now. I have one lead eligibility specialist that just moved into supervisor position.
Okay.
So her position is the one that's vacant right now, so we'll just kind of see how things play out.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay.
Well, Deb, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Really are, it's always good to see you, Deb.
Alright, moving on, uh, next, uh, we're gonna do the Juvenile Assessment Center. And Sean is here, so she's lucky enough to get to present the uh, place in one day, it is sort of like the date, but uh, if we just... Uh, if we look at where they are year to date, she has thirteen budgeted employees. Uh, her current modified budget is about eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. She's sixty-two percent spent at seventy-five percent of the year, so she's not anticipating coming for any supplement. Uh, you see, it's a fairly significant uh, projected revenue number of uh, six hundred four thousand, primarily grants. I mean, in terms of general fund money, this department has been tracking in the past few years in the range of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars of of general fund money, but the rest of it uh, really comes, is grant funded from. And those grants have evolved over the years, for, you know, the resources and which specific grants they are. But it's always been a significant portion of their operations and uh, of uh, you know, about probably close to two-thirds of her budget uh, is payroll related.
Okay, Joe, before you start, let me ask you a question. Okay, sixty-one percent spent, seventy-five percent of the year. You got a one percent increase, perfect. How are we gonna end up with a lot of extra money?
Her, but some of what her money is there for, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, Sean, it's it's grant related?
Past.
And so the timing of the expenditures has to be done by a certain point, so if they don't get it done by June thirtieth, then we we basically encumber that expense money and and keep it in this year's budget. And then when the expense is actually getting incurred, we file some of them, and then we get uh, kind of say that, you know, does the grants pay after the fact?
That's, exactly, um, we do have um, of our grant revenue coming into the JAG, four hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred six dollars is for JAG operating expenses, primarily around payroll. Eight of the thirteen employees are grant-funded physicians.
Okay.
And um, there's a a full one hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars that is passed through the JAG. So it goes directly to service providers in the community under contracts, um, and as well as some training around trauma, um, which circles us back to this morning too. So um, a lot of that money, those invoices just haven't come in yet, so that those larger chunks of money will will come.
Gone. I just wanna make a statement about that, because it may not apply in this case, but there could be some, they're gonna have some left over, and I wanna be careful.
And a benefits envelope that is gonna be uh, juvenile court.
Okay, now Chris?
I can wait, 'cause I don't know how much we're gonna go into details, since we heard it today. So I can wait till after she finishes, if she...
Okay, whatever you want.
But I was, yeah, I just wanna be in the queue, so.
I'd be fine with you going, really, I I feel like this morning, I was uh, given a gracious amount of time to share about the JAG. And at this point, I would just entertain any questions related specifically to the budget.
Let me, 'cause you're gonna hear it coming up next, but I wanna be able to say this, so when we get back, I have to say in all fairness, to the group, the stakeholder group of OYS, so so there's a discussion, Sean just laid out to you the outlay. A lot of the six hundred thousand is grant money, from CBA. The history of it, and Claire, Mary Ann, you know. When CBA, when community benefit, no, excuse me, community-based aid, I'm mixing terms. Community-based aid was about four hundred thousand, the JAG started on that. Five-year, four-year, three-year depletion down, to where we support and it came from grants, and the, and at point, and point it was largely grants. Um, now that money that we get from the state has went from about four hundred thousand, one point seven. And they have a role, what you saw today, that some of those positions are funded through that, to make some of that function, okay? There is a desire of the OYS group to give more into the cycle of RFPs for community. But my statement to them at a meeting, when it was my turn to run it, was, you want to do that, the board has to agree to pick up some costs that we get through grant money through hard costs. This is one. And I'm just be open, what I told them, I'm like, if that's the case, you have to make the case to the board on where this goes. And that's the point that I brought up today about probably this joint committee with us and uh, with the Child and Youth Services and Finance. Because when I, when I say the bigger piece of people that get money out of the community benefit, we say community benefit, community-based. Um, DCYC gets some for programs, the JAG gets some, and some other players. The board and the bigger piece of what it does with juvenile, has to see where some money is that you can put into some of the hard stuff to free up the soft money to use for other services on the other end. So I just wanted to be able to say that I put this in the room for the group to go, and I and I and I just made them the, 'cause there were some discussions happening in the room last year, when this money was getting ready to go, of wanting to take some people off of this, and I was like, you can't have that discussion without the board, because somebody's gotta pick it up where it goes. So I just wanted to put that out there for full knowledge.
Thank you, Chris. Mary Ann?
Well, and the discussion needs to be though, that putting it out there, is that either we pick it up or we don't pick it up, and we have somebody in the community doing it. So it's diverting dollars that are given to government, to community-based programs, if they're out there and able to do them. So what I think the first meeting that would be beneficial of the, of Child and Youth and Finance is to have a real in-depth conversation about what these grant dollars are used for. I mean, the the newest amount that we got from the CBA increases for additional services to be provided. But the question is, why cannot a community provider do it rather than the JAG do it? So, I don't know the answers to those, and that's what we were gonna talk about. So, it's talking about at budget time, whether we as the county want it to remain status quo of what the JAG does and provides, or do we just say, no, there's somebody else that can provide it, so those dollars should be diverted to that community-based program? And we don't do it anymore. So, I think that meeting has to come sooner rather than later, actually.
That, that meeting can come late, because a lot of that money is in the community-based aid cycle, which probably starts after the budget. So you would, you would have to get ready for the October.
And just to keep that in mind, when it, we don't put it to the JAG and then we distribute it to the community, that comes through the administration offices. And Catherine spends a lot of time, and Patrick and and Sherry Albon, because we, you know, okay, accept these up, and then we do the dispersments and things like that. So, that's how that money is going out to the community, that we're kind of serving, uh, within our office as the clearinghouse, on dispersing those services in the community.
And we're not putting the administration fee inside there as we should be.
We can't with CBA, not with community-based aid funds, we can't take any money for administration.
On, just the, just CBA, not on...
Right, we can't, we can't take any of the community-based aid funds and use that for administrative costs, as far as...
But that's not all grants, that's just CBA grants.
Right, which is the majority of what we get.
Right, I know, but I'm saying, we could be recouping it, are we charging an administration for any grant things we're doing?
You can't do CBA like a indirect cost, you can't.
I don't know, the only other grants I could think of would be the Sherwood ones. And if we're not doing that, I would, we could talk to Carrie about, about doing that.
I mean, that's how the city's set up.
If we were gonna do that too, we want it to be a grant that was, we were gonna get every year, we're gonna try to plan around. I think opportunities are pretty minimal.
I think you can, you can charge up to, I think the city does, what, ten? Fifteen, ten, they do the math, there's a math.
Well, there is on another whole, like federal stuff. I mean, uh, the um, and there was, and I gotta check and see if that, there was a point where, when the city had some of their grant people, we were... Uh, it's just travel now. I think there was a point when the 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 plan, the coordinated plan was, had this coordination piece in there, that we were supporting some travel for somebody in our office. I don't know if that's there now, that was more so earlier on, so that's done. But to Patrick's point, and I was just saying that's 'cause you leaped into it. Of the six hundred, I think Sean, take the four hundred, which may be another place. There's probably about two hundred or so that they are, to Joe's point, they help do the administration on. That if we had to do that to the community and it failed to Joe and those guys, it would put another burden on that. So, the JAG de facto is an arm of ours to administer the transportation money for need, the scholarship money for people that can't afford to get in the program when they need the need. So I just put that out there, since the the flow was going there, to throw that piece in when the bigger discussion happens.
No, and I agree, that's the, that's the hard discussions we have to have, because there again, may be stuff that we don't need to be doing to put the burden on. So.
Yeah, it's something we potentially looked at, because we, you know, are trying to justify and find a way to fund the uh, new grant coordinator, is that what we call it?
Well, we actually have the money to fund the grant coordinator, so...
For a year?
That will, well, actually, it's gonna be for more than a year, because um, I'm going to include it in all future CBA requests, and I've already talked to the, to OYS committee, and they're a lot more favorable now.
Omar, you success, that budget will be next, but...
That's the steering committee that...
Who, who are these initials, CBA and OYS?
Community-based aid.
State money.
Community-based aid, it's the one point seven million, that's the one point seven million dollars we get through the Crime Commission.
From where?
The Crime Commission, yeah, that's grant funds. OYS is the Operation Youth Success, that's the Collective Impact Steering Committee that we formed. And we had that, you know, initially with a cooperation of five different private funders to help us get that started. And they now are the ones that vet where the community-based aid money goes when it comes in, because our juvenile services aid plan, our three-year plan that required to have by law, requires us to have a committee of some sorts to vet this money and to determine where it goes, and so that, OYS is doing that. And I've talked to OYS about including that position, the grant assistant or grant specialist position to work with Carrie. It's something I've talked to the board about in the past, that they, I've gotten, I'm pretty comfortable that they're willing to include that and support that going forward. So it's gonna be in my budget.
You gotta, you gotta get that straightened out.
Well, I talked to them the last minute.
No, and I, I meant to talk to you about it, I just always got held up, there are...
Can I make a suggestion, I think we're way off the beam, let's see, let's go back to this budget, get this thing kind of moving and then move on to the next.
You got teed up for your next presentation.
I'm gonna hire somebody for July first.
I wanna see your budget, Patrick, pretty soon, so.
Hey. Gonna be...
Where are we on yours?
I, I can't tell.
Roll set?
Yeah. Is there anything, Joe, you, I mean, for sure, they've done the one percent? Well, I mean, in terms of of the guidelines and whatever, you know, the general fund money, uh, the way it's, the budget's presented, it's only going up from three thousand dollars. And I think there's some, the other issues might just be on the grants, right? But I don't know if that's a, that's really not a budget issue.
Yeah. Because Chris, Chris wants us to look at this and say, well, if they're not gonna be grant funded, then the county's gonna fund them, so that the dollars that we're getting from the grants can go to the communities. What I'm saying is, yeah, I would look at that, but there also has to be the conversation of, let's find out where they're going, and whether or not we want to continue to provide that. Because a lot of this stuff is new, it hasn't gone on for a long time. So, it does become a budget issue.
No, it it's, it's not too new, the, the newer money has been put out in the community. The pieces that are there in that budget have been there for about three, the only one, the newest one, I think, is the behavioral health position. The youth impact refugee. No, that's been there.
Not for a long time.
No, that's been there for about, yeah, it's been a long time. No, it started with um, the refugee position started with Title V money, that you could use for uh, DMC, and it continued, so. Um, I think you'll, the, but to the heart of your point, what I told that committee, and I mentioned in there, is that you're looking at a two to three-year cycle. So how I was thinking is, they get through this budget, the meeting, the meeting happens right after this with the joint committee, to prepare to see where it is for CBA, that's when the applications come in. And then based on CBA, then you know what you have to do for next year's budget in here.
There's, okay, the budget conversation is, is any of this grant money that's coming into this budget a new service that has not been provided at the JAG prior to this year?
No, 'cause all of it was in there last year. I don't, I don't know if any of it is there.
That's what I wanna sit down and look at, what is, what are we getting? Where is it coming from? How long have we done it? And whether we wanna pay for it out of general fund or grant fund, or not do it at all?
Yeah, my understand, look, looking at it, there's nothing in there that was, like, just came in this year, it was in previous. All that, all that new increase, all that new increase was um...
For next year?
Yeah, 'cause basically the big chunk is the four hundred, you, so we had the one point two, then you had the extra four hundred thousand, it came through extra. The harder that in, the increases are uh, community coaching stuff, additional stuff, uh, and the R, the RFPs that are going out for select need.
I don't know, we'd have to sit down, 'cause that wasn't my understanding of it.
Commissioner Rogers, that money isn't coming to us, that's all going through county administration, so we're referring you to those services, but that isn't passing through us.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, Mary Ann, the new, the new money is like getting RFP'd out for community service. The newer, the newer money is getting RFP'd out for community service.
Right, so...
The question is, what that percentage should be?
Well, this is gonna go on for a while, and I think the two of you and maybe more need to talk about it, but um, so, where are we on this budget?
Mike, can I say, you need to, it's it's not off totally, 'cause you need to, the board needs to understand the intricacy of it, because it's gonna be asked. It's like the board is gonna have to understand a little bit of this, because it'll come up in the next presentation, 'cause the board, based on these discussions that'll happen, the board's gonna have to be asked where it wants to go on some direction on it.
On the next budget, you're saying?
I'm saying in the next years to come.
Oh, well, I don't think we can sit here and wait for that to happen, I think...
No, I'm just saying, but you need to understand how it's flowing now, so it's not irrelevant.
Well, we will talk about this, uh, you know, if you wanna go into it right now, I guess...
No, 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 I'm just, it's just a tease, no.
I would just say one thing, when I looked at this, you know, and I understood the, you know, where should the money go? I, and my point is, it should go where it's gonna get, have the most measurable result and have the best use to it. And that's why we need, I think, in order to make that decision where it should go, some sort of criteria about where is the money being spent the most effectively, and that's where it should go. So, but, and when I looked at this stuff, I hadn't seen any measures yet, uh, to really gauge, well, this is a good spend or this isn't a good spend. So I think that's the sort of stuff you really have to...
State's doing that.
That's what UNO's doing.
State's doing it.
Yeah. That's the state law that required UNO to do that, funded.
All of them, if you get, if you get money out of the community-based aid money, and that's the thing, what's disputed is, say you get ten percent of your monies, I'm just, I'm just saying a varied percentage. Say you get ten, thirty percent of your money for community-based aid, that dilutes the whole pool, and every program you have, that's the dispute they have, and you have to report up to the state what's going on with your program. So the state's keeping track of all that to to come back down and see how effective it is.
I think Catherine had a comment?
No, nothing, still on her go.
Okay, alright. Anything else on this budget?
I just think we need to have that meeting soon.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right after this, it needs to kind of come in.
And that's the meeting you wanna have with the Finance Committee, and you, yeah, have led the joint meeting? Okay, yeah, 'cause you know, once we get to the uh, administration budget, there's a big piece in that, over half a million dollars too, and that's the money that's used from the grant going out into the community. So, it it is, I guess, relevant for this budget here that we do consider as issues.
So we get something scheduled with all of us, whatever needs to be done?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I think you survived.
Or today.
Thank you. Yeah, today. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, John.
Just doing her best over there.
You're doing fine. Thank you very much.
Alright, next, uh, Juvenile Justice Director of Impact, Janay is here. And this is actually gonna be, uh, I think, the first time, uh, that they, she gets to present a full year budget. As, if you remember, this kind of got created late last year, and uh, Janay came on board, and she was in the process of hiring people or whatever. Now she's, she's got her, uh, at least uh, preliminary staff of three people. Uh, this year, we budgeted a little over three hundred thousand dollars for it. Uh, it's sixty-six percent spent, it's seventy-five percent of the year, so they won't need a supplement. And this was one when we... And this was one when we looked at this and then decided to make it a county department, we said it should be neutral in terms of expense and revenue of departments. So, uh, you know, we put in three hundred thousand dollars of revenue, which I think was, uh, sixty thousand from five different sources. I think there were four, uh, foundations that contributed and then I think the county contributed twenty percent or sixty thousand dollars and we funded that from one of the grants.
Servants.
Community-based aid, so that was the thinking as we brought it in to, uh, like I say, have, uh, the expense to be offset by revenue contributions and, uh, right now, this year for the three hu, uh, the two hundred and thirty-five of it was budgeted for, uh, the three positions. So that's kinda the snapshot as it is today and now I'll turn it over to her to speak about next year and, uh, how the budget overall.
Thank you, thank you all for your time. Operation Youth Success, Juvenile Justice Collective Impact. Patrick, you were doing a great job of presenting some of the stuff we do. We do have a steering committee that's comprised of numerous individuals, private citizens, attorneys, service providers, two county commissioners, court, law enforcement are all present around the table, probation, trying to get a diverse, um, selection of folks to represent the community and government that can, um, kinda move the needle on collective impact as far as juvenile justice is concerned in Douglas County. I, uh, thank you, Joe, I did come on a year ago, actually, April first and so those that you know me, that April first was the perfect day for me to come on board. It's Mother's Day, oh, and so I was excited to have my first year anniversary here not too long ago. Kind of the collective impact, I don't wanna spend, um, an enormous amount of time on the, on the work we're doing. It's really with work groups from the community around families, schools, prevention, and we now have a policy work group. That policy work group is looking at, um, not only legislative at state, but then what's coming down the pipe that could influence juvenile justice, hopefully be able to inform decision makers at that level. And then also potentially with OPS, even in Omaha Police Department, those things, that we can all work together to enhance juvenile justice processes and outcomes for our families and youth in our community. Our mission statement's on that, that first page and our goals. One of the things with us with collective impact and collaboration is really about outreach and community engagement. And so that's an area we're always trying to build upon. How do we get the voice of more people involved? Especially those that have been touched by the system or engaged in the system, affected by the system. We also, I forgot to mention, we have a juvenile justice league that's made up of thirteen to twenty-four year olds that have at some point been involved or touched by the juvenile justice system. We meet monthly and hopefully they help us inform, um, what worked well, what didn't work well, what gaps they have identified. Those kinda things that then passes along to the steering committee that then also helps hopefully inform their work and the working groups that we have around schools, prevention and reentry. So we have various, um, aspects we do, trying to, again, engage folks and get feedback. One of the, um, pieces that was discussed earlier was the community-based aid, which kept being referred to as CBA. Operation Youth Success took over basically the facilitation of those processes and along with the steering committee to help ensure that community represented, representation along with what we're funding, what we're not funding and to Chris's point, um, I think it, you know, data, you can use it in a flashlight or you can use it as a hammer, just kinda depends on what you wanna do. And I think the steering committee's really taken the approach of data as a flashlight. To Commissioner Borgeson's point too, that we've identified like how mu, what's the percentage going to the community versus other entities and those things and so it's, it's given us information that potentially may not have been known, at least to a broad spectrum of individuals, that now we can say, okay, what's happening now, now what? Right? And make those dollars more effective and efficient. So that's the plan under me of our goals, you'll see kind of a little map and it's dark and, um, hard to read on this handout, but Karen has, uh, quite better visuals on the flash drive there. And with those, that's how we get community input, it's just not the working groups. We partner very closely with the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, which is JDI, maybe some of you have heard of that group. Youth Impact, which again is the crossover youth. And then we also work with the Juvenile Justice Provider Forum, which is an open meeting, we invite anyone who wants to show up and give a brief, you know, feedback or talk about their program and who they're serving and those things and hopefully engage them in the work we're doing either through work groups or just, you know, emails, feedback, yours or resource, those kinda things.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but what I'd rather get to is rather than go over what the program's doing, I, I would like to talk about financing and, um,
Sure.
if your money is mostly grants and, uh, the life of those grants and that sort of thing, if we could, that's what we need to focus on today.
Okay, you bet.
If you don't mind.
Nope, nope, that's, that's completely fine with me. We, we're all grant funded.
Okay.
We're either for foundations.
Right.
So we're truly a public-private partnership.
Okay.
For foundations and the, and the county is through community-based aid.
Okay.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Community-based aid, who knows, who from the county can talk about that? Chris?
Community-based aid is basically Title II money from the state that was approved of the last couple of years. That's the piece that was, went from about four hundred thousand when originally came to now one point seven million.
Okay.
And, um, it's, it's used to fund things to keep kids out of detention and, uh, some other things.
What's the life of that?
That's as long as the legislature funds it.
Okay. And what about the life of the grants? Are they, uh, three or four years, five years?
You know, unlike most grants which are, come from the federal or the state, these are, uh, business money from private foundations.
Right.
If you wanna talk to.
They're guaranteed for three years with, um, the evaluation, we're going through a developmental evaluation to see if it's effective use of money and those things and then at that time it'll, you know, give and come back to the foundations.
Well, there's no general fund money then.
No, that was the idea of this, yeah.
But, Mike, that's what I'm saying, this bleeds over. This bleeds over because you need to understand the gist of this last discussion. Because public, the part of the agreement was our skin in the game and then the other foundation money is leveraged. So three, three hundred is probably what we give, then there's other money that comes from the other leverage and so, that's why I was saying, that's why I wanted to tee it up today. The meetings that we have after this or however we assume to do with the joint meetings, you gotta understand how that flows.
All I'm concerned about is if the grants are gonna run out, that if we're being expected to pick them up, that's what we need to be prepared for. We need to decide whether or not it's worth it or if we're gonna, that's kinda where I am and that's how I've always been in grant programs, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's pretty, pretty basic, but I understand what you're saying, but that's where I am on grants.
I just want the record to show that when it, when it comes time to remind you, I'm gonna remind you when we're in this meeting at this time and where I referred, you need to know it, so I just want the record to.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments? Anyone? Okay, well, I really appreciate it.
Oh, wait, wait.
Doug?
Well, um, the question I have is why is this collective not just part of the JAC? Why is it a separate department?
Doc, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Because the, the intent of it was to have, the JAC comes under the board's control. And the part of it was to have this input from the broader view of everybody that controlled the system. And the county, and the county didn't have mass control, so that's why you have the judges which have a piece, the police which control entry to county attorney's office, uh, the schools which have some other piece. All these major players that are touching the kids and controlling their flow in, you need to be at the table. So having it under us, um, didn't give that broad input of autonomy and leverage to make it move. Cause the heart, the heart of, the heart of OYS is to get at all this stuff before that brings them in.
So then who controls the part, county still controls it or is it?
The county has.
We're the fiscal agent.
Yeah, we're the fiscal agent and the county has five, myself, Commissioner Borgeson, Patrick, Catherine. We have the most members of people on the steering committee. Then you add the county attorney, two judges, um, Sean, uh, who's one of our, uh, points of contact, Brad Alexander, who's over the youth center. So we have a presence, a number of presence of our interest, but it's made up of everybody that touches the system. So the, the accountability is, the leverage is, we're accountable for this. State, the community-based aid money, the group, because it gets community-based aid money, made the decision that we're in the public meeting law, so all the meetings are open to the public. Um, and they're, 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 we make decisions based on that, so that's the best.
But to follow up on Commissioner Boyle, if the grants dry up and we enter another recession, what are we gonna do with the services?
Well.
We have to let people off or terminate them.
That'll be a discussion that we have to have when it's there. The thing is, the, the money that they have is from the state, that, that money has no, right now, right now it has no indication of going anywhere. That money potentially, the discussion is it could go up. Uh, so that depends on every appropriate, truthfully, every appropriation year. Everything's on the line, every appropriation's here.
But Doug, I don't think we, some of these grants can mandate you that you'll keep it going for several years, but I don't think this is one of those that we're mandating.
Yeah, they, right now, the money part of the agreement is, there sure was doing an evaluation of
Right.
the piece right now. So at some point, there's a developmental evaluation that is evaluating the whole OYS effort and that'll get back to give us idea how it's going and they'll make their decision if they're gonna continue funding based on that.
Mary Jane, you have something?
I just, um, when you were saying about the county had to have skin in the game.
Yeah.
That was part of the grant. Is there a line item allocation where the, where the skin of the game?
Just, just right here, that's skin.
Okay.
Anything else there, Doug?
Laura?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Just for the group, could you explain the difference between this and JD AI? Particularly as they're funded, uh, from the county, how much are we spending and what is the distinction?
We're not spending any money for JD.
Do you want me to explain? JD AI is a process and there's community-based aid money that funds the JD AI coordinator and a data person of that. And we, um, probation applies to, for that money and that has the JD AI coordinator. JD AI is a process that mainly deals with detention. OYS is the process that deals with, it's largely the part we want to get to that Commissioner Borgeson said in the board meeting today, you want to stop the flow in from the schools. That's why you have the schools there, you have all these other entities that push up here to us. JD AI's main piece is to provide alternatives for kids that shouldn't be in detention and that's the process that, that's driven the number now from, at about forty-two in the, uh, youth detention center that we're at now. So JD AI is a process to eliminate the kids in detention. OYS is the piece set up to try to make the, the bigger gather of, for instance, um, a, a big amount of kids that are getting suspended from South, we, we're funding a pilot project there for school-based resource offices to prevent that flow of kids coming in here that shouldn't come. Um, and there's other efforts right now that come out of there with some other like this, the other groups that are trying to address particular needs that came out of there, that's the, the youth council which called the Juvenile Justice League. Uh, the object that was talked today in the presentation, which you'll hear more about, which is the numbers that show disproportionate minority contact, that's a joint effort between the group there to handle that, so. Like, um, Janay said at the beginning, JD AI, JD AI right now is the mother of all the data that triggers where we go and where that data says you got trouble, we try to go there and move. And so the, the program's not set to go this way, where the data says go, you try to go.
So the salary though, this thing?
Salary comes out of C, community benefit, uh, community-based aid, help.
Any other questions or comments? I'm gonna ask if, or suggest that when we have this, uh, further talk about, uh, funding of these, these things, this, this will be an open meeting that we have, so if any of you want to attend, you're welcome and we'll make sure that if you wanna attend, please let Karen, would you raise your hand, Karen? Let Karen know, uh, how to reach you by email and she'll, be sure she gives you a notice of when this occurs, so you'll be welcome to attend.
And the only meetings we have that are not open is the executive session because that's how we want it. We're very transparent.
Yeah, and whenever we want to, we declare an executive session. This is the next session, everybody out.
And just to explain what Mike just said, so Claire, please explain what I said. The fact is, Teresa makes certain
Oh, yeah.
that we cannot bring up a golf score or anything else in those meetings that isn't proper.
Okay, just, and the one last piece, and I'll reiterate again, just saying, that, I just wanna reiterate, that's why, you know, we're saying you need the joint child meeting and the money meeting to be able to understand her money because what Mary Ann, or Commissioner Borgeson said today about the intent, which was where everybody is of trying to even prevent them from coming in here, you have to be able to have the players that she has at the table to prevent them from coming in here.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, thank you very much, you're all set? You guys ready?
The last, certainly not least. The last, the best for last.
I'm saying, no, no.
Alright, to, uh, finish up today, we're gonna go over the budget for the fair board.
Yeah.
And, uh, as you all remember, the fair board, you know, came kinda back under, uh, more direct county jurisdiction within the past year and, and the current year's budget that we're in, uh, the only thing the county really worked with them on was funding the, the youth rodeo, which we put fifty thousand in the budget for and I think it topped about thirty-five thousand and they generated thirty-five thousand in, in revenue so that was kinda a break even. So now we're gonna, uh, talk, have them present for, for next year, uh, and talk about the way they envision their budget and then to keep in mind as we do this, that when we originally talked about bringing the fair board back, we said that this would be funded, uh, just about a hundred percent with tourism dollars, so it's not general fund money and so then this relates to, as we get into the budget and, uh, tourism, uh, budget that we have to make sure that the, the amount here for the budget is funded through that tourism line.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you.
We're new at this, so bear with us. Uh, this is Rob Vincent, he's your Douglas County Fair Treasurer.
Hello.
And, uh, so, um, what we're looking at is, uh, we've got a lot of exciting things going on, um, so, thank you. So now we're back to finance. And, uh, part of this budget too is we've included the trail challenge, um, fair and then the high school rodeo, which will be three different, uh, um, events. Um, our ultimate goal on this is we wanna be self-sufficient. With sponsorships and, uh, grants and, and what have you, so, um, we are the only, region's only urban county fair. Um, I went to a zone five, hoping to meet with the folks from, uh, Chicago, St. Louis and, and Kansas City about how would you proceed with an urban fair. They don't have it and so, uh, we have been connected up with, uh, Seattle and, uh, Los Angeles. So we've got some pretty good, uh, people to help us, um. We host the only high school invitational rodeo. Um, right now we're reaching out to six states. We have a potential of thirty-eight states or five provinces of Canada. Um, the kids come, they're all the champion in their own state, they compete, thousand dollar scholarship winner takes all. Uh, one of the reasons that we like this event, um, this, these kids are role models to other kids. And so that is one of the reasons we want this vehicle. The other thing is, the Douglas County Fair, we are proud to know. Um, the other thing is, the Douglas County Fair, we are proud to announce it's gonna be held at the Crossroads Mall.
Really?
Whoa.
Really? It's the busiest intersection in Nebraska. So, you know, um, we're excited about that. And so we are still looking for more, um, people who have anything that, or interest that you think would showcase Douglas County. We are welcome to.
What's the date to have this?
Third week of July, it'd be the
Twenty-first through the twenty-third?
Okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-first to?
The twenty-third is the fair. And then in October, we have the
The eighth.
High school championship rodeo, uh, man out on the Chans Ridge.
And then the
Rodeo being out.
And then the trail challenges are, we'll have one April thirtieth, June fourth, and then September twelfth, or ten.
And, and some of us here may not know what the trail challenge is. I do, but, you know, I don't know.
Okay, what the trail challenge is, is when we, when we looked at this as a board, what do we have for livestock in Douglas County? And it's like, we only have, we have two dairy farms.
Goats?
Goats, but they're not, they're not that organized. And so we have quite a few people that have, uh, horses for recreation and riding and this stuff. And, and, uh, so we decided to reach out to that. The American Quarter Horse Association, who we have partnered with to, they have a trail challenge where people come out. And when they go riding and stuff, it, it is a learning event for safety. And then they, uh, so if they get in a situation with their horse or something like that, then they don't have, uh, they know how to handle the situation. Um, we do this at Lake Cunningham. There have been some incidences at Cunningham where people have gotten hurt. And so the city was very much on board with us, for this project. So, um.
They didn't get hurt at your events, you're saying?
No, prior.
Outside of your events?
Prior.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Rogers?
Can I put a, another place on your radar to look at?
Sure.
Uh, Dallas County, Texas. Dallas, Texas. Now, they, Dallas hosts the whole, um, like state fair for Texas. But, you know, I was surprised when I went there, and of all the rural places in Texas, Dallas was hosting. So it's like the urban city hosting the state's, state fair. Uh, and the way they did it, I don't know if there may be some tips there for you, to see some of the stuff they may pull out.
Okay. Now, last year at the fair, down at the Century Link, we had, and I took pictures of it, we had ten quilts. And we had been already promised a minimum of a hundred quilts. So it's, uh, the interest is really exciting, um, and the people coming forward. So it's like, it's basically, what can we do to showcase Douglas County?
Marianne?
What, what was the third date on the trail challenge, July?
September tenth.
Oh, September.
Saturday. Yeah.
And you could have a Reuben kickoff since the Reuben sandwich was discovered in Douglas County. Vented.
Blackstone Hotel, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. And said it was barbecue.
Um, so your source of funds, a fifty thousand dollar grant?
That was this past year. So if you look at their handout, they talk about this coming year.
Okay, and that is, let's see. It's gonna be a number four. For two thousand and sixteen, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, we're looking to have a budget of two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Okay, and what's the source of that? Uh, two-six-two fund. Okay. Got enough? Although, and it said on that one sheet, it has two hundred thousand from the tourism fund and fifty-five thousand from the general fund. And what was your thinking on that? The general fund will be paying for one full-time employee, which would be our cell, our fair manager. In the past, this is all volunteer, the board of directors for the fair are all volunteer. And so with the vision that we have, in order for this to be successful, we kinda need to have somebody that's gonna be highlighting us in the right direction. And the requirement of that's gonna take more than, you know, three hours a week. So we've decided that we're gonna need to have some type of full-time fair manager. Um, and that's where the, part of that money will go for the, the general fund, we'll be paying for that fair manager, the summer fair manager. And I'd like to ask Catherine, that, uh, two hundred thousand dollars is kind of the big chunk for two-six-two money. Is that even in the ballpark, do you think, that amount?
Well, that's something that'll be up to the board to discuss how they wanna finance that. If you recall, there was, previously, there was the Exer, um, Exerban Agreement. That committed about, I think it was ninety thousand approximately for this year and the next year. So that's gone away when Exerban canceled the agreement. So it was about ninety thousand that would've been committed this year in two-six-two funds for the fair. Um, this request is about double that. So depending on how the board approaches, does, does the fair board, you know, do you allocate two-six-two funding by resolution? Um, which is probably a preferable approach to them applying. Um, but that's something that the board are doing, and that would ultimately diminish the pot available to the applicants.
When you say the board, you mean this board, the county board, not, not our board? No, I meant the other. The two-six-two board. Okay, I mean, uh, is that what we do then? I mean, is that what we would do normally?
Well, I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same, it would be a very similar setup to what was done with Exerban. We did already discuss with the county attorney's office whether the fair would, fair would be eligible for business improvement funds and AIs.
Right. So we don't, does the zoo get that kind of a commitment from us?
Yeah.
Do they get that money or something?
It's three hundred, at least three hundred.
They get that? You should get half a million. Yeah.
No, it's about three.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty variable, the awards, but there are some
I'm sorry?
It, the award amounts vary pretty significantly, but there are some major awards.
Well, I just want to, you know, the reason I bring it up and try to get this clarified is that I think they need to be able to count on that money. So, I mean, you know, I know we can't make a decision on it now, but we better be, uh, if they're counting on, uh, two hundred thousand dollars from two-six-two, and they can become up to ninety, things are, we're in trouble, they're in trouble.
We're not under the legislature's control, just, uh,
Okay, and we can't vote on it, but nobody's saying we're not doing that.
I think not, I think, I, I think the understanding when we were here last year was that the ninety would go.
Nineties, all right.
The ninety, that's the trade-off that comes with it. I, I, that was my understanding.
So we're talking about a hundred and ten?
What went to the, what went to the, Exerban would go there.
Right.
For sure.
Right.
The question is the other money.
Right.
So the ninety's good. The ninety's good.
Okay.
The question is where you get from the balance, and what does that mean?
The ninety was for the, the road, or the, the state, or the county fair.
Yeah.
And then they requested a ten, extra ten thousand, or I believe ten, for the high school rodeo. And so then with the trail chance, we factored that all in. And then we also factored in the fact that we are relatively unknown that we have started a, a, that's a advertising campaign. Um, we're reaching out to, like for the high school rodeo, uh, we've been in contact with National Magazine. They have these hundred-one events of the year.
Oh, yeah.
We're trying to get on that, because there's people that go all over the country to these types of events. And so we're hoping to attract them, which will, you know, bring more people in the community.
Does that cost money, that advertising thing?
Yes. Uh, if we get on the list, no. But usually if they want, you know, they have to know about us. And, and like, we're under the, this year again, we're under a time constraint of where we're last year. And, uh, so, um, that's one of the things, um, we're looking at.
And you have a, you have a budget that really takes us all into, is it, is it the? That's the problem that we're into right now, we don't have.
We don't spend money we don't have.
Right. Okay, I, but you don't have a budget yet that says advertising is sixty thousand dollars and, plus the two hundred thousand dollars and plus whatever, fifty-five for this person. I mean, what I'm getting at, is you have a real, is this, is this, is this realistic, the amount you put out here?
Yes, yes, we do have
Covers everything? They have a line item budget.
Yes.
Chris?
So, right now, your line item budget, all of it is county-funded right now?
No.
All, all of this budget is county, all your budget right now is county-funded? This one we're seeing here is county-funded?
Two-six-two, I think.
Yeah, but pretty much general fund and county. Now, obviously, I think personally, that is, is there's plans somehow to get some other sponsorship for this?
Correct.
This year, you need to go through flow-wise.
Right, um, like, like I say with the rodeo and stuff, you know, we can sell sponsorships. Um, we're in agreement now, we're, we're doing a grow-ups competition. And we are in conversation with, uh, an insurance company in town that wants to come on board.
You know, my, my, my suggestion would be, uh, you know, if you're saying it's a one-time thing, you need to start it up to float and get the corporate support?
I didn't say it was a one-time thing. I said our ultimate goal is to be self-supported.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
To me, I'm saying this, it's, you need, you need leeway. I don't know what that is. And I'm just saying, right now, with what's going on with the general budget, you know, I would be, I would say you, you put in some, you get the ninety from, I, I would say you get half from this year's. And possibly for this one time, until we get a feel of what your deal is, you take some out of the reserve, the two-six-two reserve. If that's still there. Cause at one point, there was like, when, when, when we were trying to build up, just in case something happens. And, and the law changed now, you can't build the reserve. But I say you take a one-time deal out of that two-six-two reserve and fund half of it out of this year's and half of it out of the reserve.
Well, I guess it's something Joe
I, I'm not, Catherine would be closer to the two-six-two fund than I am.
Well, I don't know, I'm not familiar with a reserve, I think you're
There was a, there was a one-time, and I'm sure that money hadn't got spent. There's about one point eight million dollars from the deal that the, and this is where I got here, when nine eleven happened.
Right.
The board wanted to have something there to give out, cause you were just basing it on the hope of that, so.
It's not a reserve, though, it's a
Well, I just, I'm just calling it that. It's two-six-two money that has to be used for that. And it's there. And if there's been good causes, you've used it. And I'm saying, if we're gonna get here, at least for the startup, I would get max sum out of this year's and take it right now and let it flow for this, so they can get started. Because my thought is, not saying one time, but I think you need to get started now on getting, somebody out there getting out the sponsorships and trying to build that rapport now. So it, it isn't a self-respending, that self-sustaining track in the future.
Right. And it's
Go ahead.
I mean, the, the more of a quality event that we have, then we can attract, you know, bigger sponsors.
I'm not doubting you, I, I'm saying, if it was me
So that's kind of what
I'd take, I'd take a, I'd take a hundred out of what's in there now, give it to you so you can get started. Because from my understanding too, there's a, there's some more unwinding, I think, that needs to happen with how we've agreed to do the fair with SARP. Because my conversation with extensions, an extension should be, now that you're about to start full-blown, we're getting into our own and some of the stuff that we have joined with SARP. Does that need to start in two years, starting unwinding and coming over here? So I just, I'm just saying, there's a whole bigger conversation there, that I don't know where resources are. But I'd be for giving you a hundred now to let you get started with this person, hit the ground, sponsorship, start building a rapport. Even now for this, to start getting it for the long-term, and then applying for the other half out of there to get this going this year.
Christopher Craft? Yes. Now, we had revenue coming in to the county fair from the selling of booths and sponsorships. And the same thing with the high school rodeo. The high school rodeo pretty much broke even. So how much actual revenue are you anticipating having from other than county government? The two-sixty-two and the general funds?
Well, right now, we're asking, now, Cinch Clothing Company is in for, you know, a minimum of seventy-five hundred. But we're asking for ten. And, uh, you know, um, they, we got that last year. And then like two days afterwards, we streamed it. And then the people from Cinch called and said, we wanna be a part of this. So, um, that's the thing, you have to have something, you know, worthy that they wanna come on board. So that's, you know.
Yeah, it's almost a conundrum that we're in, where we're starting from scratch. Yes, we had the rodeo last year, we had the fair next year, but now we're on, we're on our own two feet. And we have to hit the ball well. Well, in your two hundred and fifty-five thousand in expenses, I'm sure you have the, uh, how many contests are there, six? Four.
What's that?
How many different events are there during?
Ten.
Ten. You have the ten thousand dollars that we've gotten, uh, people that donate toward this scholarship.
Correct.
Okay. Then you've got the sponsorships that we're hoping to bring in. I thought, I thought I saw thirty or forty thousand dollars there. Okay. So will that money be coming back to the county going into general fund? Where will that money be going? All of the money we're getting Cause I see it in your, you know, in, in the line items I've seen. And, and I wish you'd brought some, to be honest. Could I ask you to do this? I think we're, you know, there's a lot of questions about the money and suggestions. I think it'd be really helpful if you kinda took a second look at, uh, the presentation on what the income would be in the budget and what you hope to get from two-six-two and all that sort of thing. And then, and particularly, if there's gonna be revenue to, to the county, uh, if there is any. Uh, if you could give us that, and do more of a, uh, Yeah.
Well, yeah, cause, you know, we gotta see what the receipts are. Cause when I look at this, you know, there's two hundred thousand that we always talked about with tourism. But we always said that on general fund, you know, we, we didn't wanna pay general fund money for this. So that fifty-five thousand then would be, would be there. I would think that we would expect, you know, the first fifty-five thousand in spons, sponsorship and receipts to come back to basically offset that fifty-five thousand. Because if it doesn't, then this all of a sudden is being funded with general fund money, which unless we're changing our idea, was not the original concept.
Okay, we have four people that wanna speak, and Commissioner Craft is still speaking, then Mr. Borgeson and Patrick Whittingdale and Catherine, is what I saw. Well, Claire had his Oh, you didn't? Okay. Since this is your first time, I can understand, you know, not knowing what to expect as we throw it at you. And, uh, sometimes you don't know if it's gonna be a curveball. So, but I, I'm, um, when we were paying Exerban, and you read, read Exerban's expenses and spreadsheet, it looks like they made thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars on the county fair, on the money we gave them. Uh, they also had in their management fee, instead of paying for personnel, they just called it a contractor, a management fee. Is that how you remember it? Say, Mark, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but I have to say this. I think what we need to do is have them present to us a realistic budget, and then we can talk about this other thing. Cause I think this is really getting into drilling down into detail that we need to have, we need to know what they wanna do first. And then we can add, tell them, well, wait a minute. Well, this, Mike, this will help them know what they need to do. It, it's no different than your drilling in earlier with some of the other ones. Okay, go ahead. So, and, and that's pretty much what I was gonna say is, you know, Exerban made thirty, thirty-five thousand, as I recall. Uh, they charged a management fee in that eighty-five thousand. So we need to do, relook at what they charged us for. And revise the bu, budget according to revenues that are offset, et cetera. And, and that'd be very helpful. And that was all I was Thank you. Uh, let's see, Marianne is next.
Well, I think, um, going back to what Commissioner Rogers was talking about, is if Catherine can give us what, if any, of a balance we have within our LV two-six-two fund to get, we can pass a resolution that says we are going to give a hundred thousand dollars to the Douglas County Fair dated April twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. Then, the next round of LV two-six-two starts, the application's out there. That's where we decide the second half of that comes from, within the normal process, which gets you guys your budget.
Don't give them quite all the budget, but still have the fifty-five thousand.
Patrick?
I'll call a question.
Marianne?
Well, that's where Joe, Joe was saying that the fifty-five, that would be part of the fifty-five thousand that they would then recoup from sponsorships.
Good.
Patrick?
I know, I, I will sit down and talk about where the money's gonna come from later, yeah. I could say some stuff, but we'll just wait.
Catherine?
Uh, I was just seeking a little bit of clarification on the line item, the fifty-five thousand plus benefits for the fair manager. So is that contracted position, or is that in the county?
Well, that's what we kinda put it in there, you know, if, potentially for contracted, if this thing grows, uh, you know.
That'd be better. Don't you think, Catherine, if it's contracted?
Well, that was the agreement, yeah, so, I mean
Could I, from a legal point of view, you may not have the discretion to do that. There are some really severe restrictions on your contracted employee, because it affects their benefits, it affects taxes. So the state of Nebraska, along with the federal government, has really clamped down on that option. You need to make sure that if you're directing the person, that person's your employee. So you're, and you're setting hours and duties and, you know, have to be really careful, just a suggestion. So you're, and you're setting hours and duties and, you know, have to be really careful, just a suggestion.
Okay, well, we kinda followed it after a way the previous contract was, laws have changed.
Yeah, it's a really good point, because if you're gonna direct this person to do, to, to tell them what they're gonna do, how to do it, and the hours, then they're not a contracted employee. If you just say, this is generally what, what we want you to do, you figure out how to do it, and you do it, you determine your hours, then it's probably a contracted employee.
You need to go once a month and tell us how you're doing. But you gotta remember, this two-six-two money can't go towards.
Sellers. Can't go to any sellers.
Well, then that's an issue then, isn't it?
Uh, that's why the fifty-five thousand has to be general fund, so it doesn't improve it for them.
So, there's some things to come back, as Mike said, go ahead.
No, what I'm curious as is, if general fund dollars are used for that, can they come back to the county through sponsorships for offsetting that?
Good question. We, we need to know that.
Yeah, I mean, I would be willing to put it up.
If we thought we had.
If we have the revenue from the sponsorships coming back, you know. You could go, you know, like we do for organizations for grant dollars, so.
Right, well, by our bylaws, we're not allowed to make money, so.
Right, so there you go.
Okay, any other questions, comments, suggestions, tomatoes to be thrown, whatever? Anybody yet? Anything? I'll duck. Commissioner Borgerson?
I just think we need to start having these on separate days, other than the county board days that start earlier.
That's a good idea, maybe on Monday sometime.
Everybody, too, everybody gets so, my, I mean, our minds are, from the board meeting, we went till one o'clock almost, and.
We went till twelve-thirty.
Like the good old days.
Here's the deal, Mike, to suggest this respectfully, uh, is that I think we really were in a drift mode today. We're all over the map on things. We drifted a lot in ways, you know, the things that, you know, I know you wanna talk about, Chris. They did not need, they don't need to be talked about, I don't think, right here and now.
Yeah, but all things are.
I think some points are, this is, I, well, you, you go off and do your own thing at two o'clock in the morning with everybody who wants to meet. But I, I think this is the only time we're gonna get people to come here. We really are.
Okay, and I'm just telling you, just so you know, if you're not gonna ask them in here, where we gonna ask them? This is, this is.
You're gonna have a separate meeting, aren't you?
No.
Yes, you are.
The separate meeting is just for juvenile. I'm talking about in general, the whole budget, and the fact is.
The whole budget can be discussed here, if we stick with finances.
We are sticking with finances.
If we have a budget that comes in, I mean, with all due respect, one that really lays everything out and says, this is where the two-six-two, this is how much you can give, and we have reserves, which is a new phenomenon to me. I didn't know we had two million dollars.
It's not.
Well, that's what I said, I just use the term reserve, it's just a cool.
It's an operating fund.
That's, that's, that's just saying.
I wasn't aware we had an operating fund of one point seven million, so. I guess I'm saying is, that we need to just operate it like we're looking at a budget and not discuss all this philosophy of how many horses you have and everything else, excuse me, but, you know, or how many kids. I just think you need to.
No, but.
Dollar figures.
But Mike, I'm just saying, that's how you find out how many horses you got in here. And so, I'm just saying, at least for these meetings and the budget meetings, you gotta ask it to learn where the money ties together.
You need to know how many employees you have, what you do, how much money it costs.
Yeah, and where, and what happens with the money, so that takes you everywhere.
I could've done this whole budget thing in forty-five minutes with everybody.
All right.
I found it here by myself.
And then, and then you get a three-hour meeting on the floor, because you're not actually here.
I have the whole damn thing put together for yourself. We're having meetings in the afternoon after the county board, thank you.
Or in the morning, yes, or.
We've had a fair. I mean, if we've got, when do we have our next meeting?
Well, you'll let Joe know a couple of weeks when you're ready. Do you wanna take the Fair Board at, at a finance committee meeting, or do you wanna take it at your committee, Mark?
My committee would be good.
I think it might be good.
It's, my committee is the less high school.
Catherine, do you have something?
Uh, I'm just wondering if, a couple related things, I'm wondering if I have any direction.
Wait, hold it. Catherine?
Should I be drawing up a resolution to allocate? Okay, and then, I know the Fair Board, some of the front end members are concerned, because they have some pending, um, you know, equipment purchases and stuff like that. But do we have enough resolution?
We don't need to do this that fast, I don't think. I don't think we need to have this done by next week or anything like that.
Actually, we'd like to.
I mean, we need to have definite figures for me, though.
I will get those for you.
Let's try.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, the, the resolution that she's talking about for next week isn't any different than, um, an item coming, um, up in the past in between LB two-six-two process. So, say for instance, um, one we did, uh, the roller skating, uh, thing came up in between.
The powwow.
The powwow. I mean, so, bringing it up next week isn't out of our.
No, I know it's not, I'm just saying, are they ready? Do we know what their figures really are? How much do they need?
Yes, we, well, half of that we see given, because we know they're gonna need at least half of it.
Hundred thousand?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. I, I brought this because this is, if we're told it's required.
Okay.
So I apologize for not bringing the, the line item itself.
It's a, it's a learning.
So we need, we need a computer and a printer to start getting this stuff up, because fairs, so.
In two months.
Yeah.
And three months. What we may do is, I may have to die and body out of the contract with you, because you have such great luck getting money out of us. Okay, now that I've managed.
Yeah, two volunteers just gave up their whole day for us.
Thank you all very much, we are adjourned.
Thank you guys.
Yes.
Sorry.
I got a question.
People, three-thirty.